Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, I do, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. So, thank you Board for the opportunity to address, in particular, the Mira Montana Access. I think, you know, when we first started all these discussions years ago, and even more recently with the threat of litigation, you know, to think at the end of the day that the project, as you know, has been emailed out to everyone, would even in the court of law stand up to these frivolous legal challenges, and to think that everything comes down to this one potential, you know, question around this ramp, I think this ramp, it's not really related to the project in hand. I think, you know, Procopio has been very litigious, they're actually doing, trying to do some things in the high school district, and I don't think it's central to the mission of education for what we're trying to achieve. And so, I would just as easily abandon the ramp in order to proceed with the key mission, which is getting our kids back in school and educated. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this, and thank you to the Board and everyone for putting this amazing school rebuild plan together that really, up till now, has stood the test of time with this one minor point of discussion that we're discussing today.
Thank you. Next we'll have Arzad Nesyri, followed by Sheila Krishna.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Go ahead. Oh, thank you. I'll keep mine very short and sweet, just wanted to reiterate my support for everything. I know the Board has been tracking on this, and the staff at the district. So, thank you so much for pushing this all the way through, and I think we all feel very vindicated with the outcome, and please, you know, we, we just support you and feel free to move on with the ramp, and whatever it is that we have to, you know, scrap in order to get this project to completion. So, thank you so much for everything you guys have done.
Thank you. Next we have Sheila Krishna. Sheila, you're in the call, and you're on mute, there you go.
Hi, how are you guys?
Great.
Hi. Just wanted to reiterate what's already been said, that we're incredibly appreciative of all your efforts with the rebuild here, and certainly, everything seems to be standing up really well, and, you know, if it comes down to a matter of a ramp and a simple area, that certainly, we would want the rebuild to move forward. So, just wanted to add that into the, to the evening tonight. So, thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. We are now at item 4.1, Board Approval: Consideration of Modification to the Delmar Heights Rebuild Project Involving Potential Removal Stairs and ADA Compliant Ramp at the Southeastern End of the Delmar Heights School Campus. We have a presentation from Chris Delhanti, Executive Director of Capital Programs and Technology. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, President Halper, members of the Board, Dr. McClurgan, the public, John's gonna pull up presentation, there it is. Thank you, John. It's gonna seem kinda odd with me telling somebody else to skip ahead, huh? So, first, thank you Governing Board Members for the chance to present. We will be sharing an update on the Delmar Heights Rebuild Project tonight, and so, John, if you could forward a slide. And tonight, we will cover a couple of topics. I'm going to go over our, some of the background on our project. I will touch on the CEQA lawsuit, of course, and an update on the ruling, and then, we do have a staff recommendation related to this. So, next slide. So, I wanted to start with the background of the project. The district really began its plan for the Delmar Heights School Rebuild Project quite some time ago, as we began planning through the Facilities Master Plan process. And as you know, that was quite an exhaustive process with quite a bit of community input, and the Board did approve the Facilities Master Plan update in July of 2018, followed by approval of the Measure MM Bond, approval to put it on the ballot in August 2018, and then, the public then supported that with over 60% of the vote. So, to get to the point of even planning for the Delmar Heights School Rebuild, we did go through the public process of the Facilities Master Plan update, and then the passage of the bond. Next slide, please. And then, after the passage of that bond in 2019, we did embark on an extensive community engagement process, as you know. During the spring of 2019, we moved through, starting with no design at all, five community meetings, and went through the goals, facts, needs, and concepts, and inputs to shape priorities in order to create the Delmar Heights School Rebuild Project. We came back in the fall to get further community inputs, and to help us to shape the project into what we have today. It is important to note that the Delmar Heights School site has been there and was built in the 1960s, prior to any development being around the school site, and the rebuilding of the school has really been focused on including significant safety improvements to the campus, improving traffic and parking conditions, and creating a new 21st century learning environment for our students, as well as improvements to both our indoor and our outdoor areas and our recreation areas. Next slide, please. As we look at the process we went through, during the engagement efforts, we really asked the community how we could improve the school site, and some of the adjacent homeowners did express concerns about views. We met with homeowners regarding trees and landscape next to Mira Montana, and we did go through steps to make adjustments during the, the design process, especially in the fall, as we got more input after going through the design process with the main public, where we had hundreds of people attending those meetings. We reduced roof heights, we increased the field size on multiple occasions, and moved buildings to the east, improving views on a number of occasions. We also, it's important to note, have kept our HVAC units at ground level rather than rooftop. It's a little bit more expense, but it was something that the community prioritized as well to this process. And then, we went to the step of asking architects to invest, investigate alternatives such as green roofs, retaining walls, and alternative plans that were discussed and shared as we went through this design process. Next slide. So, that resulted in this redesigned campus that includes both the safety and structural improvements that we've identified, as well as adjustments made in response to the community over the course of the design process. Next slide, please. So, that brings us to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA process that we went through. The district did hire Placeworks, an environmental consultant firm, who really undertook a thorough process in going through the CEQA, through the CEQA process. And with CEQA, it's really our, our, our job to look at the impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, and then determine whether those, there are impacts, and those will have environmental impacts, and if so, can they be mitigated. And so, the initial study, which then was turned into a mitigated negative declaration, was 783 pages, including the attachments. So, really thorough documents, looking into this, this project and looking at it in great detail. Then, with a mitigated negative declaration, which says that there are no environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated, we received a number of comments. This has been an important project to the community, and we asked our consultants, although it's not required, to respond to every comment. And so, the response to comments document after the public input was 373 pages. So, at the end of that process, the Board did approve the CEQA document, the MND, in May of 2020. Next slide, please, John. And then, I brought this slide back, as I shared when we were conducting the CEQA process. It is extremely common for a large project like this, that's a rebuild of a site, to go through a mitigated negative declaration. And part of the reason, as we shared when we first went through the CEQA process, is because it is currently a school site, therefore, it is being used as a school, and the, the improvements that are being made, in most cases, can either be mitigated or actually improving the situation on the campus. And so, as we shared, as we went through the CEQA process, many of our neighboring districts doing many similar projects have gone through a similar CEQA process. Next slide, please. So, after the Board had approved on May 12th, 2020, June 12th, 2020, a month later, the litigants filed their lawsuits challenging the district's approval. That led to a court hearing on December 22nd, and initially saved the field, the litigants challenged by raising 17 arguments. They did ask the court to rule on 14. Those were the methodology used to analyze noise impacts, whether there would be construction noise impacts, whether there would be school operational noise impacts, potential traffic impacts from student relocation during construction, construction traffic impacts, school operational traffic impacts, construction air quality impacts, school operational air quality impacts, wildfire and emergency fire access impacts, land use planning impacts, potential conflicts with the Troy Plains Community Plan, recreational impacts, and potential impacts to biological resources related to sensitive plant species. And I read that off because it shows the broad swath that was challenged. And with that broad swath, there was all one claim related to whether the project was adequately described. This claim was rejected, saying that we had not adequately described it and included the coastal zone, which was included in our response to comments. There were also 13 related to claims of significant environmental impacts. 10 of those 13 areas were ruled in favor of the district, and three of the 13 areas were ruled in favor of the petitioner, the litigants. Our court hearing was on December 22nd, and after that hearing, I do want to note that the court issued a 16-page decision, and that, that decision and the district statement can be found on our website. So, if the public would like to be able to, to look at that and to look into this in more detail, under our Measure MM page, and then clicking on the CEQA litigation page under Delmar Heights School Rebuild. I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail on these different claims on the next couple of slides. Next slide, John, thanks. So, there are items deemed to be without merit. I'm gonna point out a few, and I'm not gonna go through all 10 for the sake of time, but there are some main points that were raised by our opponents, by the, by the opponents to the project, that have included the modification or reduction of field space, wildfire danger, and traffic slash the parking lot, and, and the modifications made there. So, those are the three main points that seem to have been raised repeatedly by opponents to the project. And so, we're gonna talk a little bit about each of these in the next upcoming slides. So, John, we go to the next slide. So, if you look at the reduction of field space, the modifications to our field space, this challenge was deemed without merit, and the district's review was appropriate, and improvements to recreation were noted. And specifically from the ruling from the judge, they said, "Given the extensive discussion within the administrative record, record is set forth above, evidence exists supporting the conclusion that the impact associated with community recreational use is insignificant." In other words, although the rebuild project will result in changes, these changes are not significant for the purposes of a CEQA analysis. Therefore, this aspect of the writ, the mandate lacks merit." So, saying that these are not a significant impact, and these changes to the fields do not come to that level of significance under CEQA. Next slide, please. With wildfire danger, wildfire, wildfire concerns and emergency access did not require further study, and the improved access and reduction of cars on Boquita, along with no increase in students or staff, will improve emergency vehicle access. And specifically from the ruling, it was noted that the new parking lot and drop-off area could improve emergency vehicle access to the surrounding neighborhood. Given all of these factors, there's no demonstrated potential for a significant impact related to wildfire and emergency fire access, and that it lacks merit. The court also concluded the rebuild project will add and improve rescue vehicle access via the new fire access lane, and will add fire hydrants, will buildings an additional 20 feet from the canyon edge, and upgrades to more fire-resistant buildings equipped with fire sprinklers. As we said, this is going to be a safer campus that is going to improve access, and the court concluded that way. Moving to the next slide. And finally, traffic and our parking lot and the adjustments, as we've said repeatedly, this was a high priority for the community, but it has been brought up as a concern. And traffic and drop-off and pickup were deemed to not create an impact with respect to operational noise or traffic on Boquita Drive. In fact, they noted that the RK Engineering, which did some review for Save the Field, their comment letter speculates that the new drop-off pickup lane will increase operational noise levels. However, there's no evidence in the record supporting this. Student staff populations will not increase, such the vehicle trips should not increase. And we've said that, if we have no increase in students and staff population, we shouldn't see an increase in traffic. In addition, it's reasonable to assume the expanded parking lot and new drop-off pickup area will bring vehicles onto school grounds and away from the residential streets. This aspect of the writ of mandate lacks merit. So, again, these really supported the arguments we've been making as well, in that these are improvements, and in light of CEQA, they were deemed not to have merit and needing further study. Next slide, please. So, the court's decision did say that additional testing was needed to determine whether a couple of areas, temporary construction noise would exceed the city's allowable threshold, and so, they have a determined threshold predetermined for the city of San Diego, and if so, what mitigation measures could be or would be implemented. It also said it was unclear if the Southern Maritime Chaparral habitat might be impacted, or if an endangered plant might exist within the location of our stormwater pipe repairs. We'll show, visual kind of showing exactly where those are, and that also looked at whether the proposed new stairs and ADA ramp in the southeastern portion might create traffic in Mira Montana. So, a couple of pieces to, to this end. The court will be issuing an order called a writ that will set forth what, what the district needs to do to address the three issues, and then to bring the project into compliance with CEQA. The litigants want the district to prepare a full EIR, and reanalyze everything all over again, new alternatives for the design. And our legal counselors tried to have the litigants agree to look at only the issues the court has identified, but the litigants will not agree to limit any issues. They are basically attempting to use this to leverage, and force the district to redesign the whole school. So, let's look at these couple of items that are specific to the areas that are deemed to need more study. So, next slide, please, John. The first is temporary construction noise. The issue is whether noise from construction equipment will exceed the city's CEQA threshold, and mitigation is needed. Further studies needed, but this is a study we can do to look at more detail on where the, the construction noise would come from and how that might be mitigated. It's a pretty straightforward request. Next slide, please. The potential sensitive plants. The issue is potential impact to Southern Maritime Chaparral, whether an endangered plant lives in that area, that could it be disturbed? And I wanted to point to a couple of pieces that come from the ruling. First, from the Biological Resources Section, it says that with sections, with the exception of repairing the two stormwater outfalls, the rebuild project will not affect this habitat, because the rebuild project is limited to the current fence line of the school. Only a small portion of the Southern Maritime Chaparral habitat will be affected by the outfall repair, less than .01 acres. So, as we said, we, we have endeavored to not impact the environment and to keep within the fence line, and these are two areas that really need addressing. They also noted that the extent to which this habitat will be disturbed is unclear. For example, it's not known whether the endangered plant specified, species identified in the comment letter is even located where the stormwater outfall repairs will take place. And that's the gist of this, is further study is to determine, does it occur there? And if it does, how much you mitigate it. So, there is further study needed. But let me show you a little bit more about that. So, with the next slide, John. This part of the project, again, is the only part of the project outside the fence lines. It's kind of small, but if you look at the bottom, there's a little red circle at the bottom southwest, and then a little red circle on the west, near where it kind of cuts in. And those are the two areas where these outfalls occur. It's really an improvement that will benefit the surrounding habitat and benefit the school site. And so, this is a, an improvement that we're trying to make, that actually will have a positive impact for the habitat and, and the reserve. And so, we are just looking at, we do need to do a little more study to ensure that we are not negatively impacting that sensitive plant. Under the next slide, please. And then, the final issue that was brought up is whether the additional stairs and ADA ramp from the cul-de-sac will result in an impact due to the increased traffic that it may bring. So, if you go to the next slide, slide, we'll kind of look at this a little bit more, too. So, I just, first, we wanted to point out, it wasn't part of the original plan. So, on the left is the plan as it was in 2019, prior to some updates that were made that went to the plan, the current plan that we have on the right. So, this has not been a part of the plan throughout the design process, and I point that out because on the next slide, John. As we looked at the, these three issues, we are recommending we remove the stair and associated ADA ramp. And first of all, again, was not part of the original project. It was added as an addition, based on community interest, and it was an enhancement that added some convenience, but it is integral to the project. And we are concerned, as staff, that with the challenge saying that this may increase traffic, that the litigants' claims of traffic, it, it could stall the project and might require an EIR. So, we are asking the Board to remove the stairs and ADA ramp from the project to avoid any traffic issues related to the project. I will say, in next steps, if this is approved by the Board, we will advise the court that it's been removed, and request that the district's further analysis be limited to the temporary construction noise and the sensitive plant study. And as I shared, the court will be issuing an order called a writ, setting forth what the district needs to do to address the three issues, or in this case, should the Board decide, it would be hopefully down to two issues. And we will be filing, filing a proposed writ with the court, we would anticipate this week, and then anticipate the court's final ruling shortly after that. And so, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. The staff recommendation would be to remove that piece of the project. Again, there still are some steps that need to be taken, and the writ that needs to be filed, so that we can have final determination from the judge. But this would help us to move forward with, continue to move the project forward.
Thank you, Chris, and I'll open this to the Board for questions or comment.
Hey, Chris, what does the, the ramp area look like right now? How, what's the access into the school? What does it look like? Is it dirt path?
Currently, the, the actual where the ramp would go is, is kind of sloped up towards the cul-de-sac. There is a, an access gate that when school was open, was, was being used, so, you know, community members could and did go to the cul-de-sac and kind of go down the pathway a little bit, dirt path, and then go in through that gate.
Is that gate gonna be part of the design still, or, you know?
So, we, we haven't.
If we're to ruin the ramp, would the gate be there?
We, we would have to look at that, and, you know, there is a need for custodial access, so we would anticipate having, there, there will be a couple of gates on our project because we need maintenance access. Should the Board decide to remove this, we would, you know, look at where a gate might go, as we have now for maintenance access and what we might use it for.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So, Chris, just to be clear, in a perfect world, we'd keep this ramp, but due to this litigation, it appears it makes sense to remove it. And, and so, the removal of this ramp is directly associated to the litigation?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, it, it is an amenity. It, it would have been, you know, you could call it a nice-to-have. I mean, it's something that the community had expressed interest in, and adding that access point. It was not integral to the plan, it was not part of an access for ingress or egress that was necessary as part of the plan. But the, the recommendation is based on being able to continue to move the, the project forward and the potential for that inclusion of that, and the analysis of that traffic to stall the project.
And it, and it makes sense to balance the, the moving forward on this project with the inclusion of that ramp is really what we're here to, to analyze?
Yes, that's absolutely right. And the concern of, you know, I, I can't hazard an exact guess, but how, how long, you know, if it, if it does, if that is the piece that could turn it into a, a longer environmental review, then, you know, we, we have students off-campus, and we know that it's really important to be able to continue to move the project forward for our, our students and community.
Are there other questions or comments?
Could you just go into a little bit more detail, Chris, about what the next steps are to analyze the drainage repair issue and the plants that may or may not be affected?
Yep. So, we'll be doing a, it's a focused sensitive plant study, and I may be misquoting that. Dwayne Mirz, our consultant at Placeworks, but it, it will, in essence, be, we will have a biologist who will come and take a look, and be looking at the plants in that area, and ensure that we, we know all of the plants there. There is a chance that the sensitive plant, the Delmar Manzanita, doesn't, isn't located there, and then, you know, we, we wouldn't have a mitigation. It could be that something's loaded, located there, and then we'd look at what would next steps be if there was a need for a mitigation measure. So, the, the next step is to, to take a close look and ensure that we don't miss any plants, and we make the right next step decision based on what's, what's there in that environment, in that habitat.
And then, when can we start looking at the plant issue and the construction noise issue, and do we have an idea how long that would take, both of those analyses?
Those analyses shouldn't, the, we're talking about to analyze, it, it should take, you know, a matter of, you know, weeks. It's not a long analysis. I've already had some discussions with Dwayne Mirz and Placeworks. We also, though, as I shared, we are, will be filing our proposed writ, and Procopio on behalf of Save the Fields will provide their proposed writ, and the judge will need to make a determination on how their ruling is carried out. So, that will play into timeline as well. And so, we're hopeful that by moving forward and be able to, to file this, and hopefully get a determination, then we have a much clearer picture on, on how to carry out the ruling that they, that was determined on the 22nd.
Can I, can I just point something out? It, it is, it's highly irregular for a judge to issue a 17-page ruling, and the fact that he did so leads me to believe that he's going to take a position more similar to what the district is, is saying, and that is that the, the EIR, if any, would be those three items that he's pulled out. And we're listening to the judge, just as we've listened to the community, we're listening to the judge, we're taking steps to take those items that he felt were an issue, and, and analyzing those today, and hoping to move forward by doing that. But that doesn't remove the ability of these people to appeal that writ at some point in time. So, I just want to be clear that we're taking every step that we can take to move forward with this school, and if this school gets delayed any further, that's on them, because they would be taking these steps. And I just wanted to point that out, that in terms of expectations, we're doing whatever we can to make this project go forward. And if it's delayed any further, that falls on the petitioners, those on Mira Montana.
I think it is something to note that the items that were found to need a further study aren't about the operation of the school or the layout of the school. It's about construction noise, which there will be some, and so, we, you know, if we need to study that a little bit further and look at how we might mitigate it, then we will absolutely do that. And, and then, these outfalls are in need of repair, and so, you know, they're, one of the items is actually a, you know, mislabeling in an appendix. So, we'll, we will go through a really thorough plant study to ensure that we don't miss anything. But I just think that it's important to note that these are not operational things. It's not the layout of the school that was deemed in this ruling to have, have any issue within CEQA.
Thanks for explaining that, Chris, and, you know, I thank you also for pointing out that, that this, the stairs and the ADA ramp were items that were added to the plan at the request of the Board in order to provide a public amenity and just approve, improve access to that site for all of the community. And it's disappointing that these litigants don't want to have it in there, but certainly, our priority has to be getting kids back to school on this campus as soon as possible. Are there any comments before I call for motion?
I just wanted to put you back real quick and just kind of say that, you know, throughout this process, it, it's, you know, litigation, it always has consequences, and here, it seems like we're gonna lose a ramp. But, you know, ultimately, the- Um but, you know, ultimately, the. Which is kind of very, it it's, there's an irony in that when it's the community requested that, we're trying to add it. And yet, because now that we're being sued, we have to remove something that was beneficial. Um, you know, it it the the judge, as you guys, as Chris and and Doug had mentioned, they didn't find any kind of significant issues. Um and it's a very clear indication to me how this will proceed. Um the design ultimately has remained the same. It's it's just to me, it's just a matter of time when this gets built. Um but throughout this, it's. It it, there are consequences. Again, like families are being displaced from their schools. They can't, kids can't able to go to the schools that they. That's in their neighborhood. They need to be, parents need to adjust and and every single day are taking their kids to the bus stop so they can drive a little. Driving them over to Ocean Air or, you know, to take them over to the hills. Um. Construction costs, I'm thinking, are gonna increase. Um it's been over, you know, a year. It's 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 only, it's bound to happen. Legal costs are mounting. Um, you know, so we're gonna have to look at this down the road and projects are gonna be, we're gonna have to reevaluate. Um so, you know, there there's huge costs that we have to pay. And and it's. This is the price of the lawsuit and the community is paying for paying this price. Um but, you know, what what exactly has Save the Field even gotten out of this is they removed an ADA ramp. Um and to me, it's just, it's really outrageous. Um so, I just want to get that off my chest.
I'll just jump into, um, you know, I grew up on Boquita. Most of my childhood and teen years. Um and I spent. All those years playing in the canyons, playing up on Mira Montana and. I I mean, I think that this would have been a really nice feature to have had in the school and it's. It is sad to me that we have to take it out. Um I completely understand why. Uh, you know, it's it's not worth it to to keep. Um delaying the project and. The other two issues, and we can, we can definitely work and mitigate the construction noise and. We have to repair those those outfalls because it's, you know, just, it's unsafe. Um but I think that. You know, looking back, I I don't know. I think that years from now, um maybe. The the people filing this lawsuit will. Wish that they hadn't. Maybe, um because. You know, having that ramp would have been a really nice feature for people in wheelchairs, for, you know. People who use strollers, um, you know, for kids on scooters, for kids on bikes. And it's just, it helped with the flow of. You know, I've talked about it before, the topography in Del Mar and most of San Diego, it's so canyon-y and just. Being able to, you know, maybe connect to the lower part of uh. Del Mar uh heights on the on the uh west or, sorry, the eastern side um of Mira Montana. To the school, it it could have been, could have been nice. Um but we're not gonna have it, so. Um but hopefully we can move forward and get this project rolling and. Um get kids on a a really awesome, new and improved campus. And that's, that's the end goal. So we've got to keep that in mind. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Gonna call for a motion to approve the consideration of modification to Delmar Heights Rebuild Project. Uh and the removal of the stairs and ADA compliant ramp at the southeastern end. Is there a motion to approve the removal of the stairs and ramp from the project?
I'll move to approve the removal of the stairs and ramp for the project.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Member Mock.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Wooden?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion has carried. Item five point one is adjourned of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Wooden?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to adjourn the meeting has passed and the meeting is adjourned at six forty-five PM. Have a good night.